Commissioner Gomez.
Yes, sir.
You are up at bat.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Board. So I do have a presentation this evening for you on One White Plains, the update to the city's comprehensive plan. As you might have read recently, the city did unveil a new website for this effort. And I'm here tonight to give you a brief overview on where we are, kind of status update, answer questions and the like. I'm sure there'll be a lot of interest here tonight.
Can I just ask, because I don't read the local newspaper. It's on, there is a website up now called One White Plains?
Onewhiteplains.com.
Oh, okay, you spelled it out.
Yep, so it's up. It's there to solicit initial public feedback and comments regarding the efforts to update the plan. There's a vision survey, which I'll show you momentarily, that talks about, you know, kind of getting people's three ideas for the future of the city of White Plains. And to date, we've already received over 115 comments on the vision survey, as well as some of the other feedback, very robust feedback, I would say. So the community's been clamoring. So I'm going to give you a brief overview of where we are, what it is, what is a comprehensive plan, those sorts of things. And then certainly you can have a dialogue to your heart's content. All right, so One White Plains, what's in the name? One White Plains, the hope here was really to brand a new way of looking at our future planning documents for the city. That is to consider and really look holistically at what is, we all know, a very diverse city, both from a land use perspective, economic perspective and the like. So, you know, really trying to take a broad look at the city and the comprehensive planning process, hence the name One White Plains as one municipality moving forward. So I'm going to start with what is a comprehensive plan? And this is really intended to answer a lot of the questions I get sort of on the road or just in general. You know, what is the plan? There's a lot of talk of what it is and what it isn't, what it should be, what it shouldn't be. So I'm going to go through my initial definition and then I'm going to talk about sort of what the state requires. So the way I define it is really a set of guiding principles based on broad community vision. And I want to stress the word broad because, as I noted earlier, it's an incredibly diverse community. Everybody's got very strong opinions about how the city should grow, how we should preserve certain areas, all that sort of stuff. So again, it's a broad vision in this document that acts as a guide for future land use planning and development for the city of White Plains. And in my experience, you know, having been involved in several of these processes previous, there's four things I'm really going to point out from the get-go and what I believe a quality comprehensive plan should be. And one is to be aspirational, as I noted, something that talks to the future and trying to vision what we want to be. The second is educational, kind of what we're doing right now even this evening, talking about what this document, the power, as it were, of land use planning and documents that are adopted by our common council. We want them to be concise. Some of them are awfully lengthy and wordy and not all that easy to distill. And the last one, you know, moving into the 21st century as we have, how do we create a document that's dynamic, that's going to live, that's literally not going to be collecting dust on the shelf in 10, 15 years' time? So something we can update easily, something that's perhaps more web-based, something that is dynamic and, you know, is timeless, so to speak, as we move forward. And then the other questions I get quite a bit is sort of this notion of how specific a plan should be versus how general. And there's really no right answer here, but what I can say is that, you know, this is a guiding policy document for how the city's views its zoning code. And the zoning code, as you all know here at the planning board, is what regulates development in the city. So there's definitely a need to be specific in some instances, but often general themes as guiding principles are a way to approach a lot of these larger land use issues to allow the city to be flexible. And I'll get into that briefly as well. Being proactive versus responsive, obviously COVID and some other things we could have never perceived coming our way. But the idea is to try to look into our crystal ball, recognizing that, you know, we can be as proactive as we want to be, but recognize we're going to have to be responsive as a city. That's just the reality. And then the final item is how specific, when we adopt this plan, that is the common council and the mayor, when they adopt this ultimate new comprehensive plan, how much specificity is there relative to zoning amendments and changes to effectuate the vision that's laid out in this new plan? So that's a big kind of item that we can talk about as we move forward. This is just important, why are we doing this? It's always important to kind of step back to square one. As I said, it's to codify the community vision. We hear a lot about kind of shaping the future versus kind of protecting the future. Sometimes they're the one and the same, sometimes they're very divergent in perspective. We talk a lot about community and there's a lot of real excitement around this plan. And who does the community want to be? And then that leads us back again to the initial question of who is the community? You know, it's residents, it's obviously folks that come here every day that work here. It's folks that, you know, call the city home, work, play, live, all that stuff we talk about. So it's an incredibly complex task to come up with a codified vision. And then the two other caveats from my experience is recognizing from day one that change is inevitable. So acknowledging that throughout the planning process or in the beginning, I think, is important. And the second big caveat is planning in a vacuum. Having been involved in several plans in the county, you know, some do a better job, I think, at looking at regionalism, looking at issues that are beyond our borders alone. So that's something that we have to be very mindful of in this process. And just to close on this issue, kind of legacy, I talk about the legacy all the time of what these documents mean. So we have a strong history of comprehensive planning in the city of White Plains dating back to 1928. And there's really a legacy. They're not just words on a page, they're not just adopted documents that haven't been, you know, enacted. So there's a lot of policy that really affected the way, impacted the way we developed the city. So to the extent that as we move forward and we adopt a new comprehensive plan and ultimately some associated zoning amendments, we have to be mindful that, you know, the vision that we're putting into place has a huge impact on people's lives. When we talk about density, we talk about transportation, we talk about equity in terms of access to jobs, spatial mismatch between jobs and affordable housing, et cetera. So that's something that's really important to head on the bat. So you're all familiar, as the planning board, of course, being involved, many of you in this room, not in 1928, but we did start in 1928 with comprehensive plan. The city updated in '62. We did a bunch of massive urban renewal in the '70s into the '80s. We've done many, many, many studies, kind of economic development, updated the plan again in '77. Have done a lot of open space and other type of planning since then. And then the bottom right images here represent the '97 plan, which was updated in 2006, which is kind of, you know, it is what we have on the books. So we are updating the '97 slash 2006 comprehensive plan for the city, which you're all familiar with. So everything we write, our communication, we talk about is referencing consistency with this particular plan.
Excuse me, so the White Plains Vision Plan is the base plan we're updating?
Yes.
Is that what you said? Did I misunderstand?
Yes, the White Plains is an update to the existing adopted.
Which is the one from '97?
Which was actually adopted again in 2006, right? There were amendments in 2006 and in 2012. So essentially, it's really a matter of semantics. It's a new plan, right? It's a new plan based on, you know, there's a lot of great bones there, but we are developing a new plan for the city. This is just to illustrate that, you know, since 2006, there's been a lot of planning going on. Yes, we haven't updated specifically the comprehensive plan, but, you know, we do every five years, the planning department and the common council ends up adopting what the plan, the planning department puts together for HUD, the consolidated plan for funding. As you all know, the transit district did a big plan a few years ago by the Metro North Station. That was very significant with public outreach. So there's always plans, it's a matter of now taking a lot of that wonderful planning and moving forward in a seamless way. This is just to illustrate some things I found in my office in terms of the efforts and kind of the outreach that was done back in '94 and '95 to gear up to the '97 plan. Very interesting articles, worthwhile reading. We've digitized a lot of this kind of as a record of how the process went. And it was a very involved process, which I know several folks here were involved with. So we also, as I noted, had great success, I would say, several years ago with the Transit District Strategic Plan in terms of outreach and utilizing technology, doing a lot of in-person meetings, a lot of touchstones, if you will, with the community. I know Rich Payne was involved and others on the stakeholder group. So we really had a great model there. I think of how, one way in which we want to really hit all parts of the community as we unveil the new plan. Since '97 and 2006, of course, has been a lot of change in technology. So this is a great example of our projects and proposals page that we have at the planning department, where we track every development, large development in front of the common council, so anybody can, from their home, be able to track development, status of project, download things before the common council. So, you know, Katie Crawford here from the planning department's been instrumental in sort of being able to put all this into a really synergistic view, I should say, taking information from multiple places and putting it out for the public. So great, another tool we're hoping to utilize with the plan update. And this is to illustrate some of the 3D modeling that we've looked at in the past. So all these tools that are available that were not available as easily in 2006 or 2012 even in the update. We have retained, the city has retained a consultant to help us in our efforts. At this point, we've retained BFJ Planning, which is a very well-known land use planning firm and transportation firm out of the city of New York. They've done a lot of comprehensive planning in the region. They've done the most, frankly, in the region, a ton in New York City, and have a really great background, not just on the nuts and bolts and transportation and land use planning, but sustainability and some other issues that we surely want to be looking at in the plan update. So to end, I'm going to talk through, that's kind of the background. Where are we with process right now? What is kind of the general approach moving forward? I'll direct you to the website after this as well. You can see a lot of this information and kind of go through it at your own, at your leisure, leisure, whichever you choose. But here we are, we've structured the process and working with the consultants in really three phases. And this is important, hopefully you can read that first column, which we're calling Imagine. And Imagine is really this first phase that gets us to the end of 2021 and includes elements of public outreach, significant background research to kind of coalesce a lot of those land use planning documents, update demographics, a lot of the information or the need to move forward with the planning process. We have new census data that's coming awfully soon, which is exciting. And then developing the initial framework for how we're going to update slash create this new comprehensive plan. And that includes a new vision statement, as I talked about, and a framework for moving forward, literally a table of contents of how we're going to produce this very complicated land use planning document. So that's where we are right now in the Imagine phase. I have a little more detail in a second, but the hope is that moving into 2022 and 2023 is the meat of a lot of the public workshops and sort of online public engagement, substantial public steering committees and sort of, you know, committees that are working with the community to provide kind of a lot of touchstones and information as we develop the plan itself, meeting with, substantial meetings with community stakeholders, and continuing with a lot of the research that we're doing and evaluating local and economic trends. So there's a whole bunch of data crunching behind the scenes that'll be taking place in the coming year or so. And then I want to direct to you, hopefully you can see that middle bottom column there, middle row, developing the plan. So they're looking at potential themes, the consultants and the city. Once we've heard from the public, there's a lot of themes that are not considered an existing plan that is sort of real, looking at sort of details of sustainability, environmental issues, economic development, little built environment. So a lot of regional kind of goals that we're looking towards implementing as part of this process. This is just to illustrate kind of where we are right now, and I'll show you the website in a moment. But you'll be hearing more information soon. We're going to be presenting to the common council at the upcoming work session, both BFJ and myself, regarding kind of status of where we are with the public outreach component. And you'll hear more information in the coming weeks about how folks can get involved in this initial Imagine White Plains, Imagine One White Plains process. There's a little more detail on the plan, which I went through already, again, 2022 to 2023. And then implementation, which runs from 2023, ongoing, meaning, you know, coming to the planning board like we do, talking about how we're doing once the plan does get adopted with some of the recommendations and implementing the vision that the community enacts. So to close, I want to direct everybody to onewhiteplains.com, the website, everybody watching at home. It's been up for, I'd say, a month, month and a half now. We're building it out each day. And so if you go there on the first landing page, you do have access to this vision survey. The goal in this initial stage is to get as much public feedback. There's a vision survey, there's also kind of a blank sort of opportunity for you to write whatever comments you want. We've already collected a ton in our database. There's a way to sign up to get updates to whatever happens on the website, much like our city website. And there's even some cute, cute, I guess cute, opportunities to upload photos of the city. So we're kind of calling for photos and people's unique vision of the city. So again, all this participation early on in the process. There's also, here's kind of the vision right there on the left, we want to hear from you. So you enter your vision survey, we have things available in Spanish as well. We have some videos that are presented, say, to the common council. So this presentation this evening, we'll put on the media page so folks can track progress of where we are and make sure it's very transparent in the process of where we are in the status of the update. We've updated or uploaded rather all the comprehensive plans. For the first time ever, you can go to our website now and view all those plans I noted dating back to 1928. So for the first time, that's in one place. We have an extensive map gallery, so we're looking at ways to really get out to the public all the mapping information we have, as well as a one-stop shop for kind of existing plans and reports. So there's a wealth of information already, we're adding stuff all the time. And the hope is that people will go there and be heard as we start this, kick off this process. So that's my overview, I can certainly answer any questions.
Chris, how are you getting the word out on this besides email blasts? I think I saw something on one of the lit signs by the muni lot. How is the public going to find out about this?
There's a whole bunch. One is presentations like this, right? So we've been on the road doing this. Again, we'll be in front of the common council Monday's work session. We're doing a bunch, there's both email blasts, we have significant access to, say, the White Plains library's email listserv, as well as the city's. We have the city's newsletter, of course, we have Twitter and sort of the social media. You'll be hearing very shortly about the unveiling of sort of what we're calling a listening tour. So the city is going to be going out into the community and listening, really simply listening at multiple locations. So we'll have more detail of that coming, not to get out in front of it this evening, but it'll be out there. We're gearing up, there'll be more press releases. Frankly, I'm excited at the level of response we've received already through the website, noting that it was, you know, put in a press release, there's a couple little outlets that picked up. But we've gotten quite a bit of information. So I encourage all of you here in the room, many city leaders here in the room, to reach out to your networks and get folks to go to onewhiteplains.com. So we're trying to brand it best we can. And the hope is that you won't be able to get away from it shortly, it'll be everywhere.
It'll be everywhere. What I wanted to ask is that, is onewhiteplains.com, I didn't even know about it, not that I need to know about it, but I'm somewhat aware of things. How is the best way to keep informed, get on there and get on their mailing list?
Get on the mailing list.
The common council work session is televised?
They are televised.
Oh, they are, okay.
They are televised. And the beauty of the website now is even tonight's presentation, including this discussion, will be uploaded tomorrow to the media page. So there's sort of a running, if you go to the website, there's kind of chronology of the kickoff when this was first presented. So there is the ability, if you miss these meetings, to go straight to the website.
But that's the place to go.
That is the place, tell all your friends, everybody. We're even developing a QR code, so we'll have the code, so you'll see it all over the place. You could take a photo with your phone, you know, like ordering meals or something, right, during COVID? So it'll be everywhere, that's the hope.
Chris, is there a committee in place currently?
There is, it's a great question, John. So not during this initial phase, this, the stakeholders, sort of the committee, as many of you are aware, in 1997, there was a robust group of committees, right? There was a stakeholder group, there's even some ad hoc, that was very active. So there's not a group in place. I know there's a lot of interest, and the mayor's kind of combing through and looking at ways to get a committee that's comprised of, obviously, the entire community, representative, I should say, of the entire community. The way I see this working, frankly, is as we kind of close up or end up this Imagine first phase later in 2021 and then jump into the full process, is that, it's the opportune time to have the stakeholder group in place. But there's certainly been a lot of interest in the community. So the answer, short answer is not yet.
Is it going to be set up like in '97? You had, I don't remember how many, you had like task forces?
It's a lot.
Yeah.
2006, there was one. Too early to tell, but it'll be closer to the 2006 version. 1997 was incredible, but it was a, you know, I've looked through all the records, Leonard, it was almost unwieldy to manage them all, honestly.
It got so many people involved in the city. Now, again, part of it is that there wasn't computer and technology, but the meetings at the high school, I mean, neighborhood associations, that's how people really, really, you know, you hear a lot of the old timers talk about back then, because it really did engage the community. So, you know, you may be able to do that, as you say, based on the transit.
There already is a list of stakeholders that absolutely will be getting a blast email very shortly after this council meeting, that, you know, everybody will be contacted. Incidentally, in some of those newspaper articles from 1994 and '95, there's a lot of criticism in sort of the newspapers, folks saying, we didn't know about things, just fun, you know, because everything had to be in the newspaper, obviously, back then. But a lot of the op-eds were, you know, there's no opportunity to get involved.
Yeah, I'm saying it's always something.
But there were, you know, there was 25 committees, so I guess there was a way to get involved. It wasn't that, it was about.
Is there a budget for this process?
This first process in terms of working with a consultant, there is a budget, sort of limited scope, mostly tied to the outreach component, John. So a lot of what you've seen in terms of the website, a lot of the outreach and this stuff, has been done, frankly, a lot from the planning department. But we have been working with BFJ and we're going to be, you're going to be seeing a lot more of them after this council meeting out in the community as well. But that's for the first phase of this project, again, going to the end of the calendar year. So again, we're gearing up, it's going to be a two or three-year process for sure, and I'll keep you updated.
And what role, and what role does the planning board, what do you see as a role for planning board?
Integral role. So, you know, very often under state law, if there's, with the comprehensive plan update, very often there's a public hearing in front of the planning board before adoption, as well as the common council as administrative body. Very often, there's at least one member from the planning board, very often the chair, frankly, on stakeholder committee group. But I think in this case, particularly when you look at the stakeholders and the folks that are shaping development in the city, you know, before, right now, the body that has, aside from the common council, the most authority and understanding of their existing development conditions. So we'll be tapping into all of your expertise for sure.
Commissioner, if I could, thank you for presenting tonight. You always give a thorough, you know, overlook of everything that you're proposing. My favorite phrase tonight is spatial mismatch. I think that really kind of touches on what an old comprehensive plan might not look like in the future with spatial mismatch. And I think that's important to think about. Would you list maybe, you know, when you go on an interview, they say, what are your three top qualities? What are your three biggest, you know, faults, if you will, not faults, but what would you say some unintended consequences of a comprehensive plan going wrong would be? Like as a hypothetical, where should residents really focus their interest in helping the city develop this new comprehensive plan? Because everyone wants to help.
Yeah, that's great.
So I think they might need, and everyone really might need a kind of a guide for where can I best help this?
It's a great question.
You've been through, I mean, as you mentioned, you've been through this process before.
No, no, I've been through, there's a lot of pitfalls. And frankly, that's why this sort of three-pronged approach, it's really two. It's really, this whole Imagine process that we're running to the end of the calendar year is intended to get us to a place where we have a preliminary kind of vision. It's not going to be easy, but a preliminary vision statement and, like I said, almost like a table of contents, because left, I want to say unabated is the wrong word, but many of our neighboring communities, I'll put it that way, have been bogged down in what can be a very long and arduous process to update a plan that ultimately gets adopted by the legislative body. So we all have a lot of great ideas, we all have a very strong feeling about the city. So this Imagine first phase is to get a lot of, get a jumpstart, if you will, on the public outreach component and get some level of coalescing around community vision statements. Not we're updating chapter four, updating chapter 13, we need to talk about, that will come. But this initial step is intended to sort of get out in front and really provide all the opportunities for public input and hear people, right? There's a lot of talk, and I've been involved in these processes previously where, you know, there's sort of, I want to say lip service, now I'm going to get myself in trouble. But, you know, we're going to hear from the community, you know, for a public meeting or two, and then we're going to rewrite the comp plan. That's clearly not the intent here. And I'm saying we're going kind of the other direction and trying to create a new paradigm that this really is engaged community dialogue. And the notion of One White Plains is engaged to a level that perhaps wasn't even done in '97 or 2006 in the sense that we have ability through technology. We're going to be making a lot of effort to be going out in the community on a lot of the areas that perhaps are more underserved, that might not have, be as involved in some of these legislative decisions typically, to really go to people's front door. So that's what this first step is. Rich, I was going to dodge the question and say, you know, like the interview, your worst qualities, that you work too hard, one of those teals? But, no, yeah, I can't, I can't stop working. But, no, that's really what we're hearing. And just the final caper on that is, I didn't go into equity planning here, and I'm not going to talk about the future, because we all know as a city we're going to adopt a world-class comprehensive plan. And I don't just say that, I mean, we are who we are, and we're going to do this the right way, and it's going to be award-winning, and we're going to all come together on a singular vision. That's the dream, or hope at least. But what I will say is that even in our historic plans dating back to the '20s, '50s, '70s, I mean, there's a lot of legacy of things that we did. It's very easy in hindsight to look back and say, ooh. But there's a lot of the way we developed the city that perhaps, knowing what we know now, perhaps we would have done differently. And I can say that about a lot of the stuff, and I'm not casting or throwing stones or casting stones, but we're going to hear from the community, we're going to hear from all the experts in the community and all everybody, and hopefully coalesce around the vision. We'll see, I'll be here, I'll be here a lot, we'll see.
This is a difficult job, because even if it's done incredibly well, a large percentage of the people are not going to agree with it. And ultimately, that's what you're faced with.
We don't know that.
Well, it's just going, it's just going to happen. And to take Rich's comment about, you know, a comprehensive plan gone wrong, I don't think it can go wrong. It just, the city could look very differently 20 years than what you might like or I might like or what, you know, the mayor might like. So I don't think it's a question of it being wrong, it's different. And this community is evolving very quickly. And I can see it, I mean, I'm out in the community a lot. And this is a situation where you can't please everybody. You have to try to, you know, put the best minds we have together and come up with the best plan we can. But it's not going to be a document that everybody's going to, you know, every citizen of the city is going to cheer, and we have to accept that going in, at least I do.
And my goal, and I'll speak for myself here to that point, my goal throughout this process and all my experience and everything I've done in city planning to get me to this point this evening is, the word One White Plains, the hope is that when we go out in the community, that we all think of ourselves as residents, community members, visitors of the city of White Plains. Not necessarily where we happen to live or where we happen to shop, but really think and open everybody's mind that there's a symbiotic relationship between all the neighborhoods, and we all have our special traits. But it really is one city, and that's going to be the challenge, is being able to kind of educate folks. And we can't please everybody, but the hope is that we all understand where everybody's coming from, because there are going to be very disparate opinions, and I travel to different communities all the time within the city. And even within the same neighborhood associations, there's very different feelings about what we should do moving forward. So, you know, realistically, the hope is to all sit around and hear each other out. And that's what I'm hoping, that we're going to embody in this process.
You know, like, one of the things that you had said was about education. And this is not criticizing anybody or any plan or anything, but a lot of neighborhoods have no idea about other neighborhoods. And I think that's, I don't know whether the '97 plan was more successful in letting other people know things, but I think this is a good opportunity. I know only because being on the planning board, there are neighborhoods I wasn't even aware of.
Sure.
And I think that that's really a great opportunity here, with the similarities and hearing things and being supportive of that, as well as the one thing that we all have in common, which is the downtown. And I think that this gives it a really good, a good opportunity. I was wondering, I liked what you were saying about concise, because I've seen lots of master plans that I wouldn't read. I mean, they are just so voluminous, you really couldn't get to it. Is your thought that there, as you study certain things, there might be interim reports about things? Or how do you keep it concise? How do you keep people focused over two years, do you think?
So that's the key, and I think the answer to that, Lynn, is the web. The answer is that, I think, long gone, well, not long gone, but gone are the days of the 400-page comprehensive plan. That's a PDF you download. And perhaps that's there, right? Whatever, you know, the ultimate conclusion of this process, there will be an adopted document by the council. But when you go to this website, onewhiteplains.com, and you want to learn about infrastructure, community facilities, or however this plan gets structured, you hit that tab, and there's sort of that digestible vision, perhaps there's the metrics and the goals in a way that's very easy to understand. Yes, if you want to dive deeper, the web allows us that ability to dive deeper within each of those. But it's got to be created, and it's a whole different mindset. It's how the stakeholder group is going to be working with the city staff and a consultant from day one. It's not going to be literally redlining page by page necessarily. It's how we. It's it's how are we looking at these sections in a way that, you know, we can cross-reference? So infrastructure related to job access, related to housing. And that's way easier to do in a digital platform than it perhaps was in traditional documents. So to answer your question, there's a readable way. We all read and consume information on websites in a very different way than we did in a reading voluminous documents. So when I say concise, I mean distilling very complex concepts into something that's actually useful and understandable for the community. And if you want all the background data, it's there, but it's not going to hit you in the face when you get to the website. That's the goal, that's the goal.
Is there going to be like a mailer perhaps for folks that aren't online? That, you know, when the city sends out the the fall programs for youth beer and stuff like that, maybe there's something that could be in a mailbox, because a lot of folks, as we've all noticed, might not check email, might not be on Facebook, and that's just, you know, I'm sure that's already been discussed.
Yeah, and we thought, you know, we've done previously with community development and Judy has been instrumental and Katie have been doing a water billing. I mean, there's other ways we get to the community for the folks that are, you know, maybe not going to be online. So, yeah, you know, using the library, like I said, as well. We've got a lot of hard copy translation, so. But all those ideas are great and feel free to reach out to me directly or send a note here if you have ideas about outreach.
Thank you, Commissioner.
But, yeah, we're all ears.
Anybody else? I need a motion to close the meeting.
So move.
Second. All in favor?